You didn't hear from Todd.
Oh, it's all needed.
Recording in progress.
Hi.
Michelle.
(laughing).
All right, so it is six o'clock. We will go ahead and get started with our Joint City-County Planning Commission Work Session. We'll start with the City Accused Bay Planning Commission Role Call. Chair Stevens is absent. Commissioner Amy Aguirre absent. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Marano?
Here.
All right, now we'll go ahead and move on to our county commissioners.
So we're going to let our county commissioners introduce themselves, everybody that's here, and then we have two currently online.
Joe Aguirre, Coos County Chair. Todd Buchholz, Coos County Vice Chair.
I'm sorry, gentlemen. We have to hit the button on the microphone or we can't hear you.
Whoops.
Joe Aguirre, Coos County.
Todd Buchholz, Coos County.
Diana Schaub, Coos County.
Joanne Hanson, Coos County.
Okay, thank you. It does look like we have a few individuals that have signed up for public comment. Dean Lundie?
Before you do that, can we?
Dean, I am so sorry. We're going to introduce the two county commissioners that are online.
(laughing) Sorry.
Matthew Boarderstrauß, Coos County.
Todd, can you hear us? Okay.
All right, Dean, we'll go ahead and have you come on up.
Thank you, everyone, for keeping the open comments on all four, expanding the urban growth district. I came here this evening to talk again about pedestrian and bicycle safety. We had our first fatality there. I was here a couple of weeks ago talking about the intersection at, I think it's Keywood and One-on-One, the speeding thing. We've, we, our Division of Transportation has known about the public wanting to connect the boardwalks, North Bend Bridge all the way to downtown Coos Bay, which I think would be a wonderful place for the city. There are no bike paths or pedestrian walkways connecting one of one that corridor. There's a sidewalk, but it's like Cuba. There's power poles in the middle of the sidewalk entirely hybrid. I haven't seen it in a civilized city. The last letter that we got back from, from ODOT, I'll read it, not for David, but anyway, we told them, you know, we've been trying to get some kind of infrastructure slowing down the speed since 2012, which was before I started doing this, but I'm on it now. Anyway, here, Mr. Lundie, this is from, probably Glenn Pedersen with ODOT. Here, Mr. Lundie, I'm writing a response to your letter dated January 15, 2025. This letter requested detail, the letter that I sent requested a detailed outline of what they were going to do along the corridor. ODOT, here's what he said back. "ODOT continues to work with both the City of Coos Bay and the City of North Bend on coordination efforts looking to leverage targeted safety programs to implement incremental safety improvements in the area that are in alignment with both cities and community needs. For example, planned improvements for '25 include enhanced crosswalks marked by lanes, additional lighting on a segment of Newmarket in North Bend, and installation of audible pedestrian signals at five crosswalks along One-on-One and Coos Bay." "ODOT Region 3 Planning Section is scheduled to conduct a corridor study in the 2025-2027 Biennial." So they're talking about studying this area for the next two years. July 25, June, July of this year, so the middle of this year, to June of 2027 is their study focusing on pedestrian biking safety improvements. This study is anticipated to begin in the first half of the Biennial. So that's what they're planning on doing, another two-year study. We've already had the first fatality right there, and I don't know how many white crosses we're going to have on those hills in the next two years, but their study should come out this summer. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, Mike Powder?
Good evening, Mike Powder, thanks, Steve. I'm also involved, you know, I think we need some bike lanes and infrastructure work around here, but One-on-One is way out of line as far as I can see. The One-on-One is classified as a speedway, basically a freeway, expressway, and it goes right throughout towns. And coming south of, you hit, soon you get the city line, you hit 45 mile an hour side, and that 45 mile an hour side goes about eight tenths to a megamile before you hit a 30 mile an hour side. Now, if that was 30 miles an hour, that would cost people an extra 40 seconds in time. But 45 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, a big difference. And quite frankly, if you look at the Argent DOT, which I've gone through so many times, urban arterial speed limits of generally 25, 30 mile an hour urban cores, which you try to do like that, 25, 35 mile an hour suburban areas, and 35 to 35 mile an hour in suburban commercial or residential areas. So I think they're way out of line in not updating their speed limit for our model line. It's ridiculous in a city limit to have 45 mile an hour speed limit. So anyway, I'll put my little notes down here, help people get them in those two. Also, Ocean Boulevard, that's classified as arterial. And in my opinion, that shouldn't be 40 mile an hour either. It's, it's a raceway, and, and it's very, very hazardous to people on bicycles or possibly to cross. It's not very good crossing, but those, those two roads really need attention. Of course, Aragon is actually part of them, so effectively more car wrecked than what the fire station area did. So anyway, there are my notes on this. The other thing, I belong to a home that's actually called Strong Towns. Have you ever heard of Strong Towns? Yeah. And they're doing, they're working on, what is it called? People want to build more houses, it's time to let them, and, you know, it's not that expensive, this might even be free, but they've got a Housing Ready City, which is a tool that you sort of, I didn't, I'll show you about, about where they're at. What they're trying to do is housing solutions, it's more digging outside the box. And they're six, they're basically reforming, reforming local government codes and stuff like that, and getting more width, ADUs, which are a bit bad, and more compact housing. So I put a couple of links there for everything you just got me there, and, you know, my, but Strong Towns, I've been following for a long time. I know they do, they're quite knowledgeable, and it's a sort of reference to, it's all passive duty.
Okay, Chelsea, I think we're ready to move on to item 3A.
Yeah, so good evening, Commissioners, City and County. Thank you for joining us. Jill Rolfe and Amy Dibble from the County, thank you. Tonight, we have our consultant, Jay Harland, here with CSA Planning to give us a presentation, an update, to ask some questions, thought-provoking. So Jay, when you're ready, feel free to take the stand and fill us in.
Want me to hit the lights, Jay? Ah, sure.
I'm looking for it here on the map.
That was obvious. I just want to say too, I do like Cuba analogy, definitely a bar of that. Why did I pick it up? We have to go over that before. That's nice, yeah. Sure. What's in that?
It's like, it's a chair. Trying to just get a chair.
So again, Jay Harland, CSA Planning, gets the problem, you did it or not, so we'll do the first real slide. There we go. So I want to first just sort of give a brief overview of the technical work. I see Commissioner.
Ed Aguirre.
Ed Aguirre, yeah. We printed half of each day.
Sure.
Paperwork, so, no, we're not going to go through that line by line.
Jay?
Yes?
Do you have the, is the mic turned on there?
It's ringing. Ringing, good, right?
Yes. Yeah.
I assume, unless we're in Cuba. So we're not going to go through it line by line, obviously, but I just want to sort of give a sort of overview of each of the technical work pieces. The Tech Memo 2, the very first one was really sort of a community meeting, talking about these guys, and stuff like that, where it's going to be a lot of technical work being done. The Tech Memo 2 is, is really sort of the regulatory history of how Coos Bay, the county and the city ended up, where it is with respect to the issues that we're looking at for this project. Pretty complicated, I guess, is how I would describe it, and a little bit unusual. Our urban work all around the state of Oregon, trying to sort of avoid Portland Metro, if I can avoid it, sometimes I get stuck doing something there. But definitely a little more complicated history in Coos Bay with respect to the, some of these areas that are pretty intensively developed near the city when compared to most other communities. So that's really what Tech Memo 2 gets into, is sort of the background as in how you sort of ended up where you are. Tech Memo 3, the main thing that does is goes through like a generalized GOAL 14 boundary location analysis. So GOAL 14 is urban, the urban, statewide urbanization planning goal, and there's four boundary location factors that you look at when you're doing things like UGBs, and it just sort of goes through some of these different areas that are around the city and looks at them through the lens of state's boundary location factors. And then it also lays out the sort of the draft regional problem statement and a draft regional goal. Tech Memo 4, that one is really the sort of the technical underpinnings of why to amend the UGB, if jurisdictions want to amend the UGB to include some of these areas, why you have to do it through an RPS project and the traditional urban growth boundary method would be very problematic. So for a minute, let's talk about what RPS is, right? So RPS is a, it's called Regional Problem Solving. It's a statute that's in the R S 197, and really what it does is, it says, if local jurisdictions agree, and they send it to the state, and the state says, PLCE says, yes, we're okay doing your RPS project for this thing, what it lets you do is have flexibility under the rules. The end result still has to comply with statewide planning goals on the whole, but you can have flexibility as it relates to the particulars of the rules. You've got to comply with statutes, you've got to comply with sort of the intent of goals, but you don't necessarily have to comply with each and every rule. And the degree of flexibility sort of that's allowed depends on the project. Today, to my knowledge, there's only been one RPS project that's been done at the state. We did a lot of the technical work for that one in the Bear Creek Valley, and this would be the second one. And so that's really what that one gets into, sort of the why, we need to, we need to do RPS to do UGB, to include these areas. And then Tech Memo 5 is prospective, and it's looking at what would the work plan be to implement an RPS project if that's a policy choice that is made by the board and the city council to recommend that? So that's, and that one is the one that I would say, you know, of the four, that's the draftiest draft, right? Because some of the choices that will get made will, will make some adjustments to the recommended work program based upon the actual objectives and policy direction that you get from the council and board officials. Next slide. So the full sort of draft regional problem statement is in that Tech Memo 3, but really CSA identified three primary regional problems. First three are really interrelated. So the standard method for amendment of UGB, it's basically a 20-year population forecast that is done by the Portland State University Center for Population Research, and they project a 20-year population for urban growth boundary. And, and then that projection is translated into a land heat. That's essentially the demand part of the equation, right? So you take that population forecast, and you also do an employment forecast, and you sort of grind in how much, estimate how much land is needed for that future population. And then the last one, boundary location problem, is then that's in the normal process, the normal, what's called Division 24, the administrative rule. The normal process is then you, you apply those boundary location factors and sort of rank the different properties by, according to a priori's scheme and statute, essentially exceptional lands, or urban reserves, first priority, then exceptional lands, then large lands, which groups, counties, not really two large lands, county, Washington County, county, county. And then lastly is farm and forest land, and then that, there's some priorities where you have to avoid the best farmland, and so that's kind of how it works. Anyway, the, so those three things are kind of, those problems are all interrelated, and the bottom line is really that the state's rules sort of assume that really what you're doing is not transferring existing employment and population areas into a UGB that are already sort of highly urbanized. And the reason for that, as I mentioned at the beginning, is two things that we need in that most communities that have highly urbanized areas near the urban, or near the city, those were included in the original urban growth boundary establishments. So over time, the rules have evolved, sort of under that assumption, that those areas are already inside the UGB, and it could base based that they're not. So there just isn't like this, there isn't just like a formula to go, yeah, well, there's already seven thousand people in this area, it's already urbanized, we're just going to add those to the UGB. So P S B does the population forecast for the UGB, it doesn't include those lands, they do the population forecast in the county, they assume they're going to stay in the county, and so you're sort of stuck, and you can't, you can't do a UGB based upon the standard rule. So that's, there's sort of those three basic problems, and then the last one is not related to the other ones. The last one is a natural development problem where those lands that are out in the county is really kind of a restriction that's a function of what's called the Urban Unincorporated Communities Rule, or the, the Unincorporated Communities Rule. And for commercial development especially, you're limited to, in rural communities, which is Millington, 6,000 square feet of commercial is the maximum you can do. And then in the urban unincorporated communities, which is like Charleston, Barview, and Bunker Hill, you can do 8,000 square feet of commercial. And the answer is like, that's not a lot. Those are, and there's some other regulations around hotels and 35 units or something like that, which if you build a hotel, 35 units, you'll be able to pay for your man and staff. It basically doesn't work, right? So, so there's an economic development problem there in that those areas are restricted from being able to make additional investments, and CSA did some analysis of some of the commercial buildings that are in those areas, and, and, you know, there's some of them that are already bigger than that, and 8,000 square foot of commercial building is very big actually, and so like they wouldn't be able to expand. But if, if they were in the UGB, none of those restrictions would apply, and if you could bank water and sewer and those things were, then you could expand those buildings and those businesses. So those are the four basic regional problems that we identified, kind of on the technical list.
A quick question. There's buildings that are larger than that in these areas already, so are you talking about new buildings to be built?
Correct. In the, in the commercial zones, if it's current use, if they, like if there's a, if there's a 12,000 square foot building, technically they shouldn't be able to expand, do addition and expand under the, under the rules.
Okay, so what about the lumberyard?
Well, and that, lumberyard is a good example, is like, if it's, if it's industrial and it's like lumber, lumber made in factories, that has some special, industrial doesn't have that problem. The rule says it's limited, but if it was industrially designated, which all those were in, oh, there's a magic statue, it's like 2003, don't want to say, where they basically, the state decided, we don't really care about industrial, industrial can get as big as it wants. So not part of the rule essentially doesn't apply anymore in the industrial areas, but for commercial, there's no sort of, there's no go. So, good question. Next slide. So jumping forward to kind of what are the policy options for planning permission, ultimately the city council. First policy option is kind of the nominal option, right? If you always want to lay out, you always have the option, maintaining the existing regulations and not making any changes at all. That's, that's always an option. And then for the reasons described before, do you mean the, if you want to do some sort of UGB amendment, you really are looking at an RPS project, if that's the technical path to be able to get there? So within that, CSA has identified sort of four different options, right? We're going to go through the maps and talk through kind of those options. So one is a UGB, an RPS project that we just looked at, including what we're calling Southwest Area, which is basically Charleston and Barview, right? A UGB evaluation would look at the Charleston-Barview area, and then the Bunker Hill Bay Park area only. Then the, the next one would be to look at both, sort of all, both of those areas, and then also to look at including the exception areas. I think probably everyone knows what an exception area is, but I'll just explain it. Those are areas that there's not any, the Goal 3 and Goal 4, the Farm and Forest Protection, rules don't apply to those areas, it's kind of took a bold exception to those areas. And so they're, they're already zoned for a higher intensity, more urban use, some of the commercials, some of the industrial, go out of residential. And then the last one is to look at the, a UGB amendment for the Charleston-Barview area, the Bunker Hill Bay Park, and then look, perhaps giving an urban reserve designation for the, some, some of all of those exception areas and the Millington area, which is a rural community designation. So we'll kind of go through these areas. Next slide. So the Southwest area, again, that's Charleston-Barview. Both those areas are urban, unincorporated communities in the county's comprehensive plan, so what that means is they're, they're already permitted to do urban intensity development, right? And they're mostly developed to urban intensity, north of two units to the acre. Both of those areas are served by Charleston Sanitary District and Charleston Fire District. They have water service from the Coos Bay North Bend Water Board, so they already have all the urban facilities, and they're already developed to urban density. So an RPS project in that area is really transferring an urban area and an urban population into the UGB. And then in the future population forecast, whenever that's updated, and that would be captured because it would no longer be outside the UGB, it would be inside the UGB, Coos Bay population, sort of county. Next slide. So the Southeast area is about definitely more metropolitan as far as policy choices. The Bunker Hill Bay Park is also an urban unincorporated community. Millington is designated as a rural community, and then there's a couple other areas that are relatively high density zoned already, I mean, much more than what you're generally allowed to do in, in the rural parts of the county. And those are the Blossom Gold and the Libby area. And then the RR2 area is a, is a rural residential, one unit per two acres, but it's kind of in the middle of all of those, right? And so we, we looked at that as a kind of logical area. We did look at some other areas, like Ismus Heights and some of those areas, but those are more removed, they're across the, the Ismus, the Ismus Loop, so they're more, they're a lot more remote relative to the city's UGB. And all of, all of these except for Millington are at some point adjacent to the city's UGB currently. And the South Boundary is just, is a boundary we sort of suggested, which is Shingle House Road. There's not anything magical about that boundary, it's just sort of seems like a logical dividing line, usually those sort of major roadways are very, kind of a drawline. The, the Bunker Hill area is served by the Bunker Hill Sanitary District. The rest of the areas don't have sewer service in this area. Most of them have water, but the other areas do not have sewer. Most of them have water, but the other areas do not have sewer. Uh, as far as fire service, I mentioned in our project advisory committee earlier today, um, I think this little geography wins the award for the most fire districts I've seen in such a small little area. Uh, you have the Bunker Hill Fire District, which is really small. Uh, and then you have sort of the, the east side, which is the Millington Fire District area, and the west side is the Libby Fire District area, and some of it is also not in the Fire District, which is primarily the porch property, uh, there on the north end is, is at least, I don't think the map is really going to fire. Again, most of these areas are developed to, uh, urban intensity, but the ones that don't have sewer are not quite as dense, and that's because they got to provide on-site facilities. So, next slide. So now I'm just gonna sort of go through, you know, the ten thousand, but like, what are the advantages and disadvantages to various policy options? So as far as maintaining the existing regulations, uh, the main advantage is it doesn't require a lot of work. You can basically keep doing what you've been doing, right? And so, um, sometimes that's attractive, that's a policy choice, because, you know, work is work, and, and requires a lot of things to get figured out. Uh, the disadvantages is that the land use and facility planning is mostly limited to the existing zone intensity. So there's not, that's the way the unincorporated communities rule works, and the stuff that is at unincorporated communities is to be restricted further. So, um, there really isn't an opportunity, if you maintain the existing regulations, to, uh, make the land uses in these areas more efficient. Sort of, I mean, there's little things, you know, little partitions and things you can do, but you couldn't do thirty units to the acre, or part of the land source, if you wanted to, those kinds of things would be problematic under the existing regulations, which is a little bit hard. Um, the other thing is, if it's not in the UGB, as a technical matter, you can actually annex land that's outside the UGB, but it doesn't really become completely right, if you will, right? Like, you can't get a rezone to a city zoning. Um, you still have the, the sort of rural plan designation, so it's a practical matter. Like, even if the property owner wanted to be annexed to the city, if it's outside the UGB, it's relative in person, it's not really, there's no reason to do it, I don't know, we really would want. So, um, that's definitely a disadvantage of the existing regulations. Um, the last one is, depends how you wanna look at it, whether or not it's an advantage or a disadvantage, but fully updating all facility plans is a lot of work. And that's the main, that's, that's the main work task and the big ticket items, to figure out how to serve different, you know, these different areas that are rocking into the UGB. So, next slide. So southwest side, UGB evaluation only, so if you're looking at just Barview and Charleston as part of an RPS project, um, there's definitely an opportunity to increase land use, we should see in that area to some degree. Charleston and Barview, um, has the advantage of it's, it's kind of an independent policy choice. It's not, since the sewer goes to wastewater treatment plant two, and it's all Hughes Bay North Bed Water Board, and it has Charleston Sanitary District, it's not really connected to the stuff on the east side, so a decision to include that area in the UGB as part of the RPS project really doesn't have a whole lot of effect on what happens on the east side, so it's, it's kind of an independent policy choice. Uh, and consequently, it's a little less facility planning effort, because it's a smaller geography, and again, it's, you know, it's kind of got its own things going on over there as far as facilities that don't migrate to the rest of the city. Uh, we've gotten preliminary feedback from DLCB, we understand they're, would be supportive of an RPS project, uh, to include this area, so that's that. Um, the main disadvantage is, there's not a lot of the land over there, because it's mostly pretty well developed to urban intensities, right? Doesn't mean over time you might not get some redevelopment, but, but the, the net bill of the land supply, we haven't done a full bill of the land inventory, we do those, you know, when we're doing UGB amendments, but we definitely have looked at it, and there's not, there's not a lot of sort of vacant, unconstrained land to develop over there in terms of creating a significant net bill of the land supply to the city. And, um, when you're doing a UGB amendment in the normal process, that's the main thing they're looking at, is adding the net bill of the land to meet the need and make it so the, the bill of the land supply you have equals the need that's not that intended to exist. Next slide. So the next policy option would be to, um, do the Charleston-Barview area, and then also do the Bunker Hill area, which is the other area that's an urban unincorporated community. Again, there are opportunities to increase land efficiency in those areas. Um, I think it's also relatively straightforward, uh, for the UGB evaluation through RPS to tie back to the regional problems and explain again what you're doing, is sort of transferring this existing population that's not captured in P S U's forecast into the, um, UGB for Hughes Bay. The, the facility planning wise, it's, it would also be limited to areas that currently have a full complement of urban services. You've got Charleston Sanitary District in the southwest, and you have the Bunker Hill Sanitary District in this area, they're in the city. So it's a little less complicated. Again, we've gotten some, some feedback on that, and DLCB is more interested in supportive of doing that as a, um, RPS project. Disadvantage is really the same, a prior policy choice, Bunker Hill's pretty well built out, so you're not getting a lot of net bill of the land from doing this. Doesn't mean it's bad idea, but it's just, isn't gonna add a lot of net bill of the land to Hughes Bay's, um, Hughes Bay's land supply. Next slide. So the next slide would, the next policy option would be to include some, or try and include some or all of those exception areas in an RPS project that we're on the prior, on the prior map, right? So the Libby, the Blossom Gulch, Millington, that RR2 area, that's sort of the double hole between those zones. Uh, this would definitely yield the most bill of the land, and the maximum opportunity to increase your land efficiency in that area. Uh, would have the most regulatory benefit if growth in the region accelerates, because this would be adding more in that bill of the land, so if growth, seems like there's definitely more things happening in Hughes Bay. I've been coming here for twenty years, and it seems like there's more happening in the last sort of five years than what I remembered previously, so things start to happen. Certainly, there's some pretty major economic development things that are being talked about, if those come to fruition. It would provide a way to be responsive to that new demand that is currently captured in the forecast. Um, I think it can still be explained from the standpoint of, uh, regional problems, but it's definitely, I think would be more, there's more work involved explaining how these are, like, UGB amendments that add to those areas, um, will address the regional problems in the face of regional problems. So disadvantages, and the first one's a big one. Um, it's, we would require the most extensive facility planning, because when you, when you bring land into the UGB, you're under statewide planning goal eleven, which is your public facilities planning goal, and also twelve, which is your transportation planning goal, you really are sort of committing to figuring out how to serve those areas, right, with facilities. Um, and you're making a commitment in your facility planning process to figure out how to do that. That doesn't mean that, you know, doesn't mean that new development wouldn't be asked to pay a significant share of what needs to happen, but gee, even just your prioritizing, like, it's hard to justify not doing certain kinds of projects if it's needed to serve your entire UGB. So it's a, it's a, it's a bigger commitment. Uh, and just kind of looking at some of those areas, topography and some things, like, there's, and existing conditions of some facilities in those areas, like, definitely, again, there's some expensive, there's some big, let's go to the big ticket, there's some big ticket items to kind of, um, to make that a reality. Uh, in, in conversations with DLCB, um, they have some concerns about including potentially, uh, one or all of those exception lands in the UGB. Uh, I think partially due to the facility planning requirements, and also, um, that this policy option would be requesting the most flexibility under the rule, right? Uh, the, the previous two, you're not, you're still sort of requesting flexibility, and they're all of the Division 24 rule, but it's really urban to urban, right? And so it's a little easier to sort of set it up and explain that really what we're doing is putting the UGB probably where it arguably should have been in nineteen eighty-two, we're fixing that problem, whereas here, we're gonna be also accommodating the future growth. Doesn't mean it can't be done, but I think it requires more technical work and a little more justification. And, um, the way RPS works is it does require the county to agree, the city to agree, and then it goes to the state, and then the state has to sign off on the work program. So, you know, to move forward, there's gonna need to be, would need to be agreement from DLCB. So next slide. Uh, so this was CSA's sort of, when we really thought about it, our kind of meat in the middle solution, um, with respect to some of those exception areas. This is the consultant recommended approach for, for the RPS project. I don't, none of these policy choices are wrong, we just see this as being kind of the most advantageous. So what this would do would be to include in the UGB, the Charleston-Barview area, the Bunker Hill area, and then designate some, or potentially all of those areas as what's called urban reserve. So what urban reserve is, is urban reserve, the county's regulations still apply, and the, you're still in a rural area, but that land is the first priority to come into the UGB. So at such a future time as Hughes Bay, like, back in life, like, if you get some growth, and the projections go up, and it's like, we don't have, you don't have enough housing in your UGB, and now you can basically do the math, we need more, then that area is the first priority. Uh, we do a lot of UGB amendments, I can tell you, they're much easier than when you have urban reserve designated, because the note, just the sheer number of parcels you have to analyze is much less. And essentially, to have a, a robust UGB amendment and not analyze parcel by parcel, the, um, the best situated parcels to include in the UGB and meet the need. So, um, there's, there's some real advantages to doing urban reserve. The other thing is, when you designate something urban reserve, um, you have an urban reserve management agreement. And often what is done is, counties typically don't wanna take away development rights in those areas, but you can manage them by coming up with some design standards, right? So I'll just use the RR2 area as an example. Some of those have some fairly decent sized parcels, they're not really big, like, two hundred acre parcels or anything, but there's some, some tens and some twenties in there. So if somebody came in with a, you know, with a ten acre piece, right? Um, you could, they could still be zoned for their density of one house per two acres to get their, buy houses and lots out of it, right? But you can have some design standards that allow the, the lots to be smaller, so maybe they'll, two and a half acres, they do their septic on the other remaining land, and then that has to be set aside for future urbanization. And then when sewer's there, you can disconnect the septic systems, they connect to sewer. And so that's something that, um, that's pretty common actually in reserve, in urban reserve areas. And it, it sort of prevents the chopping up, if you will, of some of those parcels that might be available for more intensive urbanization in the future, because if you end up with a bunch of two acre pieces and a house right in the middle of them, it's not that it can't be redeveloped, but it's gonna be really hard, right? And so that's, I think, an advantage of the urban reserve. Um, again, there's an increasing asset regulatory benefit, if growth of the region accelerates, and you have more demand. If you are going through the standard process, um, like you have an urban reserve, it's just, it's much simpler, because that's the first priority for inclusion. So you really only have to analyze those lands, I shouldn't say you only have, study area of the rules. You still have to start with this big study area, but you quickly get to the first bin, and you only have to really look in depth in the first bin of land, which is the urban reserves. So for example, in the standard process, like the Ismus Heights, that would either all or mostly all be in, um, would be in the study area, and because it's exception land, and, and the RR2 or the Libby is exception land, those are the same priority. You're gonna have to analyze and sort of evaluate each lot, lot by, pretty much lot by lot is what you have to do, so it's a lot more work. So I think there's an advantage there. Um, I think, I think it can still be explained from the standpoint of regional problems, and it's, again, a little bit of kind of splitting the difference of the amount of flexibility for the urban reserve part, the amount of flexibility would be asking for under the urban reserve rule, and I think it's quite narrow. Still, the bigger flexibility in RPS by far would be transferring the existing urban populations in those other areas into the UGB. Uh, the urban reserve plan is on a fifty-year demand basis, and the rules are somewhat more flexible than the UGB rules. So the amount of flexibility that you're requesting under RPS for urban reserve areas is much less. I don't think it's a ton more work up here, if, you know, if there's an interest in doing that on the east side, I don't think it's a lot more work to add to the urban reserve component once you're doing all the other things that you do. Uh, disadvantages, DLCB I think is still talking about this option. I mean, I don't, it only sort of occurred to me maybe a month ago, I just saw the sudden, I was driving, working on, well, why didn't we do those areas? Urban reserve doesn't have the facility, um, and that was what I was gonna say, the, which is a long here, but, uh, oh, yeah, the facility plan. The facility planning for urban reserves is, you're not committing an obligation to essentially serve those areas, but if they're urban reserved, then you kind of consider them in your facility planning and what you might need. But you don't, as a city, necessarily need to upfront make the same level of facility investments to serve those areas. So you consider them, but things that are, for example, big ticket items that you don't know when the demand might appear, yes, sir?
Dean, can we separate you two, you're, you're distracting.
Yeah, so the, um, oh, yeah, uh, so the, um, so it gives you more flexibility in the prioritization than sort of, for lack of a better term, like, the cash flow of public facility planning, because you're, you know, it's really hard on the public works directors to gauge when new demand is gonna appear, that it's gonna pay for new expensive things, right? And urban reserve, you make some development assumptions, but when it comes time to act, time, you really don't need to, for example, put in your financially constrained list, anything to serve the urban reserve area, right? You can leave those out, but you are thinking about them, so an example is, if something in your facility plan, you can add marginal capacity to serve that area, right? Maybe it'll pass, adds ten percent to the project, but would really make that urbanization of that area more economic in the future, then you can make that choice in your facility plan, and go, yeah, we're gonna spend ten percent more to have this capacity, so, because redoing it all in the future is gonna be very, very expensive, right? So, um, that's, I think, a pretty big advantage. Um, the, uh, you know, the other, the, the big disadvantage is you still have to do a UGB amendment in the future to include those areas. Yes, you narrowed the scope of it, right, but it is still a UGB amendment, and that still end up playing a cost in the future.
Commissioner Hanson has a question.
Can I ask a stupid question?
Absolutely not.
What, if this urban growth boundary is expanded by the city, what happens to the taxes in that area? Who pays them, who pays the taxes to whom?
Uh, so it doesn't result in any changes to people's taxes?
None?
No, it doesn't, it, no, it doesn't really, it doesn't, well, no, it really, it, it can't change.
So because it's unincorporated, it doesn't change the status of the tax situation?
Yeah, unless, unless it's, the, I mean, there's a couple, there's a couple parts to that, right? One, using the commercial example, where you're currently limited, right? And, and say somebody has a, a, a nine thousand square foot building right now, and they can't make it bigger, under the rules, right? Um, and that restriction would go away, and then if they did a major improvement, well, that's gonna hit, that's gonna hit the tax rules.
Right.
But there's not gonna be city taxes associated with, with that unless they annex.
Unless they annex, yeah.
Yeah, the annexation is where the, um, where the tax changes. Now, one thing that happens Now, one thing that happens, so there's sort of, there's like multiple steps. First is UGV amendment, right? Then is facility planning and figuring out kind of how you're going to serve these areas. Then there's a process where you, um, from that, you, um, adopt new, a new urban growth management agreement. Of how are we going to manage these areas that are inside of UGV? And that's done a bunch of different ways. It's really just worked out between the city and the county. There's, if you need, it's just sort of whatever the community thinks makes sense, right?
Right.
That's typically the, the case, and some amount of development is allowed in the county. But if new major facilities need to be extended, then the city says, well, now you need to come in the city.
Right.
Right? That's, that's typically how urban growth management agreements are, are set up.
But is, the, just for another question, which is really stupid again.
No, you're just asking about the process.
So let's say that they are annexed and they want to be annexed into the city. Don't they have to apply to the city to be annexed?
Correct.
And then the individuals who are in their urban growth boundary have to vote against it and, or for it or whatever?
No, as a property owner, you can petition.
Okay.
So if, if, if you meet the petition requirements, and those are in statute, there's a couple of different ways to do it. But if you petition, generally, usually the city will say, yes, you can come in the city, right? The current situation right now, I mean, outside the UGV, technically you could be annexed, but it wouldn't come with any benefit, right? Like you couldn't get rezoned or have any of the things that would cause anybody to ever want to be annexed.
Okay.
Uh, and there's, uh.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, sure. No, and I'll tell a little kind of, uh, example story. There was a similar thing in the, in the other RPS project down in the state. If you guys are familiar at all with the Metford area, right? There's, um, Metford is the bigger city, right? And then there's the smaller city in the south called Phoenix. And between those two, along, between, basically between I five and Highway ninety-nine, there was similarly a, a very intensively urban area way back when the UGVs were first established. The county wanted one of the cities to take that area. Neither city wanted it. So they, they really got us holding up the UGV annulments for both of those cities. And then finally the county said, okay, fine, what we're going to do is put a policy in our plan that says, when either of you does a UGV amendment in the future, one of the two of you is taking this thing because we don't want it anymore. And so that got adopted as a policy. Well, then when RPS came along for the, for the Brook Valley, which was not a UGV project. It was strictly to set up urban reserves for the different communities, uh, for the six RPS cities, five of which got urban reserves. Of course, passing instead, if you don't need your reserve, it's for, okay, great. Eagle Point can have it already. And so, so again, that policy came forward, right? And the county really said the same thing, like, one of, one of you guys is putting this in your reserve. Ultimately, Phoenix decided, we'll take it. Part of why the cities didn't want it was because they were like, well, it's going to be kind of hard to serve. It has its own water district. And we don't know, we don't think any of it will ever annex, right? So we're going to have this thing, but it's not necessarily going to do us that much good. And so then in twenty twenty-one, the Alameda fire came, and it all burned the ground, including, including the Charlestown Water District. Like their pumps just melted into a pile of goo. So there was no water, like zero water for a big area.
What's happening to the city?
That's right. And so that's exactly what happened. It's all of a sudden then they were all quite interested in annexing to the city, right? And so the city was, because it was urban reserve, and the city, and because it was urban reserve, the city wanted to include someone on the east side of the freeway. So they had already done the UGV amendment because it was baked into the RPS cake to transfer that population to Phoenix. So the UGV was, line was already moved. And so the process really did, most of the process was figuring out what to do with the Charlestown Water District. But once Metford Water Commission and the city of Phoenix worked out how that was going to work, the annexation that nobody thought was ever going to happen was widely supported, and it all happened very, very quickly, right? And of course, you know, nobody wants that kind of disaster or anything like that. But it's more an example of sort of how sending the regulatory framework to potential possibilities then can set the table for dealing with a very bad situation. If they would have had to start from ground zero, do UGV amendment and all that, those people would, I mean, those lands would still be sitting there, a lot of them not redeveloped. Whereas most of that area has already been rebuilt, so. So that's this one, um, so, you know, those are sort of the four choices. Next slide. So key considerations, a couple, selection of any of the policy options, except just leaving the regulations as they are, is that sort of decision, policy direction at this point is the direction of RPS project would take, right? That doesn't necessarily, for example, if, if the decision was, we want to look at urban reserve in the exception areas, and we want to include Charleston and Harvey, try and include Charleston and Harvey and Bumper Hill and the, the actual RPS projects is when those decisions will be made, right? So it might be the county and the city when they ultimately get into it, they've got to be up. I don't see a lot of benefit from even making the Libby area urban reserve, like it's got houses on it and yet, and where there aren't houses, they're like canyons. And so I don't know necessarily how much urbanization of that area is going to be of benefit. It might be that those people show up and they're like, we don't want to be even included in the reserve, right? So, um, and that's the public process. That's what's supposed to happen, right? That's why they're sharing the input. So, um, it's, that's really the policy direction now is if an RPS project is going to go forward, what's going to be included? And then that will sort of, that, we need that input to refine the technical five and sort of finalize what the work program would look like to actually do an RPS project. If that makes sense. Next slide. So we're kind of at the, this is now the discussion and sort of getting the PC's feedback. There really isn't, I don't think there's a wrong answer here. There's not like, there just is. Except for the county and the city need to be agreed. This side of the room needs to agree with this. Ideally, this side of the room and that side of the room agrees. And then when it goes up to the county and, and the council, the board of the council, they definitely have to agree or you don't have an RPS program. So, um, that's critical. I, I sort of previewed this a little bit, but getting that policy direction, the tech, technicals three through five, really, the guts of the consultant work that we've done, they're in draft form, they would, they'll be finalized, and we, we will incorporate sort of that direction into, uh, the final versions of those tech memos. Because those tech memos, especially three and four, set the foundation for why you would be doing the RPS request to the state. And then I didn't go through all the, the regional problem statement and the goals and objectives and the actions and the incentives and disincentives and the corrective actions. Those are in, uh, the drafts of those are in tech memos three and four. Like, I think probably like feedback through staff and, you know, comments to staff on that. Probably handwriting is the most helpful way to advance that. I, I do want to put a disclaimer on that, which is, those aren't normal planning terms. The, the goal, the, the goal, promising yes, goal and objective yes, actions, incentives and disincentives and corrective actions. Don't know where those came from, but they're in statute, so you have to put them in the agreement. And, uh, we, we started vague and creative, and then in working with the lawyer on the project, we both read, there's only been one of these else in the state. So we're going to start with that agreement as the template. And they're actually working on the, the legal structure of the agreement right now. So, um, so I'll answer questions, Paul, but I'm not going to take ownership of why it, they use those words. That they are sort of unusual words that don't exist in any of the rest of the, the, sort of world. So with that, I mean, I'm happy to answer questions or open up the discussion, or if you want to have questions of your staff or. And, and I should have said, Wade from DLCD is here, so if you want to bring her up to the podium, put her on the spot, I think she's happy to answer those questions. Well, I didn't get prior for, anyway. So I'm happy to answer questions.
I'll get started if, if you know, I'll jump in. Um, in regards to Millington, so my, my background in real estate and I do a lot of commercial.
Okay.
Um, in regards to Millington, and then your tech memo three, it talks about including that in the UGV. Would lift restrictions on commercial and industrial development?
Yeah, primarily commercial.
Okay. Now, now my question is, some of the square footage we do talk about how.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's really, it's the square foot, it's the square footage limitation on commercial. So the industrial, that's been industrial since, if it was industrial, I think the matter here was two thousand and three. The legislature sort of woke up one day and decided, we don't care how big industrial things are outside UGVs if they were already industrial. So they passed a statute to say, we don't care.
Because that's mostly what we have in Millington.
That's right.
Big industrial tracks. I'm working on one now, trying to get some development there.
That's right.
You also mentioned in here, could eliminate mega story conflicts between estuary management plans? Is there any, what's the background of it?
Yeah, that is again on the commercial. Some of the estuary management plan stuff is pretty, it suggests like for water dependent uses that things are pretty permissive. Right? But it's not really reconciled with, with the unincorporated community's rules. So this will be a way to get that problem to go away, potential problem. It hasn't really come up. Nobody's made a thing on it, but, you know, but there's, you know, it's, and really like some of those water dependent uses under those, get the goal sixteen. They're supposed to be encouraged, right? In those, in the areas that are found to be appropriate for using estuary, because estuary is an asset, right? If it doesn't exist every year, I mean, there's only, there's only three deep water ports in all Oregon, right? And this is one of them. So, um, so that's a, that's like a side benefit of this is to eliminate any workiness around that issue.
And the only other portion I'd say is, I think you made a great point about the commitment to big ticket items when including these rural areas into the UGV. I think we really need to think about, both us and our recommendations up, who's going to float the bill on the big taken items? And if we're going to make the commitment, like what is the capacity for wastewater treatment two now and one? And, you know, they're, they're not going to take all of it, and a lot of what we're going to put on in here if we do expand those out of a remake that recommendation. So who's going to buy some new wastewater treatment plant? And I would tell you, I do a lot of work with developers and, and look at the developed tracks. And it's, I don't know if we're going to get developers to go out and build new subdivisions out of these rural communities, and that's the floor for wastewater treatment plant. I'm, I'm just having better luck putting in septic systems in the county. It's just cheaper for developers. So that's the only thing I would kind of encourage people to think about. If we make the commitment for, I mean, clearly like you're saying, Bumper Hill and Harvey, let's see what the note writers, they're, they already have it. But to do some of this additional items, I don't want to make that commitment to the county or the city without a lot of consideration. Who's going to float that?
Yeah, and that's.
Because I don't know if I develop it.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a little bit where the urban, your idea came in. Require you, or just sort of, you should think about it, but it doesn't necessarily require you on those things.
Yeah.
Right?
Because there's geographical restrictions as well.
Oh yeah.
Oh yeah, put across the bay, you know, there's a, a consumer line across the bay.
I, I did a development project in Kewes Bay, um, it got approved, it never got built. But I remember I almost fell out of my chair when I, when the public works director told me how many pump stations there were in Kewes Bay. Like Metford has four, and they hate all four of them. But I can't remember what the number was, Kewes Bay, but it was like eighteen or something, and I was like, oh, okay. So, yeah, it's a, that point's well taken. I do, I do think there's, the other side of that, right? Is that some of those areas have net buildable land, right? And so that also can create a revenue stream, especially if you do like an urban renewal and do some, do some tax increment financing. That's a way to finance that. It doesn't, essentially the development pays for it. They don't have to front any, any of it. And they don't really end up paying any more than they, they pay the same taxes as they would have paid. It's just then those taxes go to the need of facilities to serve the belt group, and then it mentions the urban role entirely. Yes?
Thank you. This has been very informative, particularly your story about the Bear Valley. What intrigues me is that by doing this effort, uh, we can have a resilient community. Have a forbidden, that some group hits the van around here in Millicom is hanging out without any support because we have to go through a bunch of administrative groups that we could have started today rather than five years down the road. So that's, to me, that's insurance. My question to this group is, Joe Mitchell, capacity in respect of pumping stations? But I'd say capacity for us in our planning and our county planning and city planning, do we have the capacity? Or is DLCD going to come to our rescue and do all this stuff for us?
I'm staying out loud.
I know, I just, it's not a real question. It's just something that I keep in the back of my mind whenever we're doing these, because we're still dealing with Kewes Bay. No, the Estuary Mariner, remember that one?
Yeah.
So we've got some big ticket items, and this is a reflection of a lot of these plans were done in the eighties. We've got a lot of these things that are going to come up in the, uh, the two thousand and twenty-five, so I keep thinking of capacity.
So, so that did, that came up with the Kewes Bay City Council when I was here in February, that exact question. I guess what I would say is the, the, the planning part of the lift is, I mean, it's work and some money, but it's not like a massive amount. It's the facility planning that is, the facility planning and then figuring out how to, uh, get the, you know, the urban growth management agreements, um, worked out and any special district changes. Because one of the things that can happen, right, is that, you know, if properties start annexing, and you have like a small fire district, and then they keep getting transferred out of the fire district, and some of that fire district serves the rural, still serves the rural area of the county. And now all of a sudden that fire district doesn't have enough revenue to operate. Nobody wants that to happen, and there's ways to, the, there's ways to work it out, but, and there's templates. But what there isn't is a formula that you can just press a spreadsheet and get the answer that makes sense for Kewes Bay. It does not work that way. There's, there's templates and sort of ways to approach it, but it, it, that part of it requires work. And, and, and it needs to be thoughtful because you don't, you don't want to end up with special districts that end up in financial trouble that need to be there to serve the rural areas. I can see you have a question. I think you have a question. The capacity, look, Kewes Bay's plant one is roaming, I assume. Is, is that correct?
Um, plant one, I'm not sure Jennifer Worthing, a public works director, would be the best one as far as growing capacity. You mean with the improvements we're making?
Yeah.
I imagine the answer is yes, but I'm not the expert.
And plant two, I believe, has some available capacity. Um, and, and I would be also remiss when we're talking about unique things about Kewes Bay, that you also have a whole bunch of lands that are in the tribe's trust. But none of these things apply to, right? And, and which makes it complicated, right? And, uh, um, Nat Jensen with the tribe is upon our project advisor committee in our, in our meeting today. That was a whole conversation, right? And so, you know, how does that affect this? I don't really know if it does, like on the regulatory piece, but when you start getting down the string to the facility planning piece, what the tribe has in the works, right, can really affect what might make sense to do in certain locations, right? But they're also a potential, you know, a potential partner in that. And I think those are things they're open to, at least based upon the conversations and the, in my experience with the book. So, so these areas that have Kewes Bay, aren't that water for water, but they don't have a sewer system.
have a sewer system, could you make the lots smaller? Um, because it's not a, it's not a septic issue. I mean, you, you have to have so many square feet, but in a septic system. Um, and it seems like that has, that regulation has something to do with the, the size of, the size of area you can build in. I mean, for instance, in the country, it's R five or R two. Could those come in a little bit if, if you had water and...
They, they generally do have water when they don't have sewer.
Right.
And, which is some of what's reflected with the zoning, right? Sort of the one unit per two acres is a valuable size, you need for house, septic field, if you have the water service. Two acres starts getting a little small, if you, if you, if you have neither water or sewer, then you need room for, well, that's, that may be separated from the sewer surface, right? So, and the current kind of zoning allows, the current county zoning, like, if you have four acres and go to Jill, and you have furniture on one of the roads, you could come in and get a partition, and divide that four acres, means that two tubes, and do two separate separate, set sizes, right? Going back to what I was mentioning about urban reserve, what you could do though is, is for bigger partials, I was making two, four acres seem a little too small or important, but on a bigger partial, then you might have some design standards that sort of clusters the dwellings so people can get the same number of houses that they could currently get under the zoning. But the septics are also sort of clustered so that someday, when, if that ever gets urbanized, then the septics can come out and that remaining area could be developed at, you know, whatever, whatever density the city zone has capacity to serve.
Talking about, uh, design standards and your, your, uh, urban reserves. So say I've got, you know, like, just like you say, two acres house, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build out there. Would, in regards to, um, design standards with roads, well, whose jurisdiction would that fall under? The counties, like, for instance, the county allows us to have gravel roads, whereas the city requires paved curb gutter.
So, so that's a, I mean, that's a good, so typically on two acres in your zone, two acres do not need a land division, so...
Let's just say I'm RR two and I'm building one house.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, that's, that would be in the urban reserve management agreement, and it's something that could be negotiated. What, what I typically would see, right, is that where you don't have land division, you just do what you currently do, right? That's typically what gets negotiated. Once you start doing divisions in those served areas, usually what's in a urban reserve management agreement is a railway dedication for future city street, right? So you might have a ten foot dedication that you need to do, but as far as improvements, probably what's there is what you're gonna...
I would just hate to have a guy on two acres looking to put in a little gravel driveway, have to pave a sixty foot wide curved and gutter road to get up to his house. Which, if we were under the city guideline, under city standards, it would be required.
Yeah, and, and, well, I mean, it depends, that's, that's the stuff, that's the stuff that's negotiated. Typically, that would not be in a urban reserve area. Something like that can get negotiated as far as, uh, inside your urban growth areas.
Right.
But even still, I think, given the level of development and stuff, like, those are, going back to the planning work, like, that part, if you're wondering, like, what's the planning commission gonna have to do in this thing, you, you've touched on it.
Yeah.
If it gets to that point, there will be more joint study sessions about the things, how you want, especially on urban growth management agreement and potentially and/or urban reserve management agreement, where that sweet spot is, right? And when it comes to that stuff, the other thing is, the Supreme Court has made pretty clear that they don't care what you put in the agreement. It also has to pass muster from a, no, what's called Nolan Dolan exactions law, so you can't go making people, requiring them to do things that is not proportionate to, roughly proportionate to the impacts of their development, right? So that's the other sideboard that applies, not just in Oregon, that applies everywhere across the land.
Can you say it one more time?
Um, so it's, it's the Nolan Dolan, it's the Nolan Dolan case, and then there was a, there was a follow-up case, which is the...
Is your mic still lit up?
I think so.
Okay, we lost sound online. It just came back, he said.
Yeah, literally, like, right when you asked that, it came back, that was perfect.
Oh, yes, sorry.
So your recommendation, short sweep?
I mean, my recommendation is you can get the LCV on board, I, I really, first of all, the question is, we wanna do anything on the east side, because development doesn't matter, right? If you just say, we just wanna focus on the west side, as I mentioned, it's independent, it's not connected to the stuff on the east side. But to me, if it's like, yes, we also want to do Bunker Hill, my recommendation would be to work with the state and try and get them on board, but also do urban reserves for those other areas, so you don't end up with, for lack of a better term, a weird boundary, and you can do some facility planning around that whole area, that would be my recommendation. Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, I don't have one.
Oh. Jill magically gets quiet at these things. The rest of it's not so much, has been my experience.
Yeah, um, I guess I'll just offer that I think the city is most comfortable with the idea of the Charleston, Barview, um, and the Bunker Hill, the ones that are already serviced, um, developed.